Great.
Here.
Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Excellent.
Great. Thank you all for coming. I'd like to call this special meeting of the Board of Trustees to Order at 7:03 PM. And I would like to start, please, with the Pledge of Allegiance. Would you all rise, those of you in the room? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Thank you. But while you're still standing, we have a moment of silence. Today is the National Day of Mourning for President Jimmy Carter. If everyone would bow their heads for a moment of introspection. Thank you very much. Okay, everyone can sit. I want to thank everybody for coming to this special meeting, and I just have some opening comments before I turn over the meeting to our Deputy Mayor and Budget Director, Michelle Lindsay. Earlier in 2024, the Board of Trustees authorized the creation of a capital planning committee. And that capital planning committee was authorized to study the infrastructure of the village and make determinations about the type of work that had to be done in order to ensure that that infrastructure is available to us for decades. And that infrastructure included the sewer system, the water system. It includes the roads, Village Hall, all the major parts that make this village almost a mini-city. So the Capital Planning Committee began work early in 2024, under the chairmanship of Joanne Hansen, with members Michelle Lindsay, Trustee Sharer, Gardner Hempel, and Tom Birmingham. And that committee has been meeting almost every Monday since the beginning of 2024 to evaluate the infrastructure in this village and to make recommendations with respect to how we improve that infrastructure so it lasts for years for those of us that are in the village and those of us who move into the village, and even for our children who remain here. So I want to congratulate the committee for the work that they've done today. And tonight, the committee, through Deputy Mayor Michelle Lindsay, is going to explain to residents, both village residents as well as any town residents who are here, because town residents receive water supply from the village if they reside in the hamlet. How the village will fund these infrastructure projects, the calendar that will be used to determine how long it will take to fund the projects, the impact that the projects will have on capital improvement funds that the village maintains for water and sewer, and what impact, if any, and the Deputy Mayor will explain, this would have on the real estate taxes here in the village. And I believe she's going to advise us that there will be no long-term tax increase with respect to these capital improvements. Now, one of the things I'd like to do before I sit down is to let you know a little bit about the Deputy Mayor's experience in these affairs, because I freely admit, as a lawyer for over 40 years, I am not at all familiar with financial municipal finance. But we are fortunate to have a Deputy Mayor and Budget Director who served as Vice President of the Municipal Bond Department at the Chase, JP Morgan Chase. And she has done a wonderful job today, together with the other members of the committee. And I'm so thankful that she's here tonight to explain our proposal. Thank you. And the floor is yours, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank everyone for joining us tonight. So with the support, we thank the board for your support, for letting us tackle these projects and come up with this plan. So we have met with our engineer, Joe Zongle, and our bond advisor, Noah Nadelson, who are both joining us by Zoom tonight. Our bond counsel is Jeff Storch from Harris Beach. And our accountant, Andrew Arias, has been giving me a good advice this week as we kind of balance how much we're going to borrow, how much we're going to use on unallocated reserves for these projects. And the committee was also greatly helped by Jeff Voss, John Ledwith, Elizabeth Doherty, and Denise Spaltov, and the chief as well, Chief Faust. We appreciate the work that was done by previous administrations. The financial condition of the village is strong. Now is a good time to move forward with these long-term capital projects that are necessary and will leave the village in an even stronger condition. It is fiscally responsible for us to begin these projects now as the condition of our infrastructure is in dire need of repair and costs for these repairs are escalating. And I'd like to start by saying that there will be no property tax increases to fund any of our capital projects.
Okay.
So we'll begin by discussing the water sewer and general fund projects that have been determined to be necessary. The mayor is trying right now to get it so I can share my screen. But until that is resolved.
You have to join the meeting, and then you can become the host.
I have to join the meeting?
Yes.
Okay, I need to take a minute or two here to join the meeting.
Yeah, I apologize. I've been tasked with running the Zoom technology, and I have to admit that I'm not particularly good at it. So I have John Ledwith on the phone, who's usually running the Zoom technology. He's giving instructions on how Michelle can become the host and then share her charts with everybody who's attended. And again, my apologies. She's logging in now. Okay, great. Thank you. Just hold on while she does this.
Ah, good.
On the village website.
Yeah, that's what I'm going to do. I was trying to do something else, but. Calendar.
What?
Somewhere else. Here we are.
Okay. For those of you who just joined us, we're trying to work out the technology to permit Deputy Mayor Lindsay to share her screen with everybody. The charts are important, and they'll help everybody understand the nature and extent of what's being proposed tonight.
You see me in the waiting room?
Yes, I'm admitting you. Okay, once you join. Make host. I'll make you a co-host. How about that?
Sure.
Okay. All right, so I made her a co-host.
So now I can share?
Try sharing your screen.
I know there's a better way to get this to be. Here. Oh, that's not so bad. Okay.
Thank you all for your patience. Thank you, John. We've got it.
Okay.
Have a good night. Thanks. Bye.
Scroll this down. Okay, now I don't want to scroll it down. Okay, thanks to Joe Zongle at Weston Sampson. We have these charts and your screen sharing. Okay. Oh, there's somebody else that wants to come in. Okay. All right. So we're going to share this screen now. It is the capital projects that we are focused on right now. The green highlighted projects are sewer projects, the blue are water, and further down you'll see yellow and white that are general fund projects. So starting with the green, which is our sewer system, these projects are required by the DEC. So at this point, I will ask Joe Zongle to unmute himself so he can talk a little bit about these sewer projects. Oh, there you are. Thanks, Joe.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Thank you, Deputy Mayor and Mayor Sitron. I appreciate the opportunity to present here. As the mayor mentioned, we've been working closely with Capital Planning Committee and Michelle Lindsay on developing this plan. These projects, I just want to say, are a long time in the making. Some of these date back to investigations that we've done back in 2008, 2011. And a lot of these projects are designed and permitted and ready to go. The sewer system project, SSES is a sanitary sewer evaluation survey project. A lot of people that have been in the village have probably heard of this throughout the years. This has been a program that's been going on since 2009. This program is a step-by-step phased approach for investigating, finding, designing, repairing, and implementing repairs to leaks within the collection system. The collection system was built around the inception of the village. Some of it dates back to 1908. Majority of the system is built with clay tile pipes, three-foot spans, ungasketed joints that are fairly leaky. They're actually designed to exfiltrate, to leak water out of the system. The village wastewater plant experiences periods of high flow, in some instances that exceed the permitted level. So the DEC has required this program and this programmatic approach to repairing the sanitary system. The reason that this is necessary is that the village has a speedies permit, a discharge permit, which monitors the quality and the quantity of the water being treated and discharged out of the wastewater plant. Higher flows in the system create increased capital costs for operation of equipment, increases maintenance, increases chemical costs, and all the rest. So with that, we've been working on this program for a number of years. We've worked throughout the village. The most recent areas that we've looked at are called sub-basins 5, 8, and 16. Basically, what we did is we broke the collection system down into what we're calling 17 sub-basins. Everything flows by gravity essentially towards the lakes, and then there's two trunk sewers that run parallel to each other on the east and west side of the lake, and then ultimately make its way north to the wastewater treatment plant. So we broke it down into 17 areas that feed into these trunk sewers, and we prioritize them based on the amount of infiltration and inflow, which is basically non-sanitary sewer flows that are entering into the system. We've already investigated and done repairs to the public system for sub-basins 14, 15, 2, 10, and 13. And we've just completed the inspections for 5, 8, and 16. So that report has been drafted and is pending submission to the DEC. Once that's accepted, we'll have to prepare designs and then do the construction for the repairs for the system. The repairs typically consist of two different aspects. Patching up and sealing and lining leaky manholes. Most of the manholes are hand-laid brick from the early 1900s. And then it's also repairing the pipes, which we typically use a cured-in-place pipe liner, which is a trenchless technology where you basically are placing a liner inside the existing pipe to seal it up. So fortunately, the results of this investigation showed that the cost of this project is going to be less than anticipated. Based on the prior work for sub-basins 2 and 10, the magnitude of the overall area, the linear footage of pipe inspected for these sub-basins was significantly greater, and we were estimating this to be around a million-dollar expenditure. Based on what we found out in the field, we're estimating the construction cost to be around $400,000. So this is something that is a programmatic approach. Like I mentioned, this program is part of the village's speedies permit and is enforceable by the DEC. So there is an implementation schedule. So this is a required program that's enforceable with monetary fines as the threat for non-compliance. So this would be the next step. It's anticipated to be designed in the spring, go through the permitting process, and then have construction starting next fiscal year for the repairs of the sanitary sewers within those areas. The areas that we would be looking at, or that would have the repairs, are in the vicinity of Ridge Road. So it's on the southeast portion of the village. So we're looking at Butternut Road, Ridge Road, East Lake Road. That comprises of Sub Basin 5. Sub Basin, waiting for my map to load here. All right, Sub Basin 8 is a smaller area by Akoma Road. Sub Basin. Just want to get the streets, because the sanitary sewers, which people may or may not know, don't necessarily follow the roads. They kind of go through the terrain, through the mountains, through individual properties. So when they constructed these, they actually constructed them by pickaxe and went basically through areas of least resistance. So Sub Basin 16 is by Summit Road, East Summit Road, and then connects down into West Lake. So that's the sewer project in a nutshell. Deputy Mayor Lindsay, did I miss anything?
No, that was great. And I'm sorry, I kind of had a problem with showing the whole screen. But yeah, so I think, hold on a second. Soon, here I am. Share. Okay. There, we're back. Yay. All right, so we're talking about the sewer project coated in green. And the total cost is $630,000, and I believe if I move this to the right, I won't mess it up again. So here's the timetable. This year, we're going to issue bonds to do $115,000 of that project in the balance in the next fiscal year of $515,000. And we'll talk about how we're going to do this later. Okay. So we'll look at the water main projects in the village and in the hamlet next.
Just a question. This construction estimate is an estimate. Is it a conservative? Is it optimistic? Is it vetted?
Joe, would you like to answer that? I don't know if you heard the question. Did you hear the question?
I did hear the question, the basis for the construction estimate. So the construction estimate is what we consider a conservative estimate. We did include a contingency in there. We did it based on our findings and the recommendations. So it's based on number of manholes to be repaired, linear feet of pipe to be replaced or to be lined. And we used recent bid figures that our company tallied throughout the region. But we also, as the best representative example, is we used the recent bid prices for work that was just completed within the village, and then we added a percentage to account for inflation as well. Because we recognize the village has had a tendency to have a slightly different bidding climate than other municipalities for whatever reason.
So when you say conservative, do you mean conservative with respect to the amount we it could well be higher than that, or conservative meaning it's likely to be lower?
Sure. For all of these, we tried to be conservative on the high value. I would much rather have a bond anticipatory note a little bit higher and then have the bids come in lower and not have to use all the value of the bond. So we try to be conservative on the high side for these numbers that are presented here.
Okay, thanks.
Joe, a question for you. So if we do this for sewers, is this it for, and for how long, right? Like, or is there going to be something else that needs to be done in five, 10 years to the sewer system?
Yeah, this is a continual program. After this, they're going to want to have a small study to be done to confirm or to verify the magnitude of the reduction of the INI. The flows at the plant have become stable, but unfortunately, there's just a lot of linear footage of pipe in the ground. And these projects are focusing on the public sewer, which the way the village code defines it is when you've got two individual private properties that connect at that manhole where the junction happens. That's where it becomes public. So there's a lot of private laterals that are not being addressed. And the unique layout of the village where some private residents have laterals that could be several thousand feet with multiple manholes are not being addressed. So this is basically a program that'll continue until the flows have historically shown to be below the permitted threshold for the wastewater plant. The alternative to this would be to construct a new wastewater plant to have increased capacity, which the magnitude of the cost would be significantly higher than continuing with this programmatic approach.
How confident are we that this would get us under that threshold?
I think it would work towards getting under the threshold, but I'm certainly not making any guarantees. And based on the condition of the system and the continued deterioration of the other pipes, I think the program is unfortunately going to have to continue for a period of time. These repairs have a life of 50 to 100 years when they're implemented and implemented correctly. But there's just a lot of sewer and infrastructure to attack. So basically, what happened was when we did our initial assessment, we broke it down into 17 sub-basins. We recommended a pecking order based on what we saw as the highest contributors of INI. But those values could change because that was done in 2009. So we're going through the mandated order through the DEC, and we've left an out clause with the DEC if we're able to get enough removal here to suspend the program. So that's what we're hopeful to do, but unfortunately, I can't make guarantees at this point.
If there are no further questions on that, Jed, did you have another question?
No, no.
Did you?
No, no.
Okay. All right, so we'll look at the blue-coated projects, which are the three water main replacement projects. First one is the Tuxedo Lake Water Main. And this water main provides water to the entire western side of the village. And documentation shows it was installed around 1933, so it's nearly 100 years old. And Joe, would you mind explaining how this main will be replaced?
Sure. So yeah, this main is one of two mains that serve the entire southwestern side of the village, including up Camp Comfort Road and the Tuxedo Park School as well. The other line is a four-inch main that's tuberculated. It has material within it that's restricting the capacity. So it's probably functioning as a two-inch line at this point. This project is a bit of a unique project. So they installed this using river crossing pipe, which were ball-and-spigot-type pipe that was laid at the bottom of the lake. There's a lot of rock outcropping within the village here, and drilling underneath the lake would be cost prohibitive. And putting a pipe around the entire southern portion of the lake was also cost prohibitive. So the approach to this is to do something similar and sink a pipe to the bottom of the lake. We would be using HDPE pipe, which is a welded joint seamless pipe installation. It would have to be double-walled per DOH requirement, so we would put a liner inside of it, which is a Kevlar reinforced. They call it a hose liner, but it's a Kevlar reinforced liner, similar to envision a fire hose, but for drinking water purposes. We would float it across the lake and then put concrete anchors around it about every 10 feet, and it would sink to the bottom. This approach would give a very robust system that would last for a very long time. There's concern that if this pipe were to break or to leak, that it could cause some significant issues and the entire west side of the village would lose their water service. So this was moved up to a high priority because of the potential impacts of a failure. And then if it were to fail, doing a repair would be very difficult and very costly. You wouldn't be able to get to the bottom of the lake to repair it. So in a proactive approach, a few years ago, the village authorized the design for the replacement of this water main. We have the design completed, but in speaking with the Capital Planning Committee, the suggested approach right now is to put in water meters on either side of this water main, which is required as part of this new design by the Department of Health. But use the water meters to monitor the water on either side of the existing main, but build the infrastructure on both sides of the lake and permit the entire project. So that way, we can monitor the meters on either side to make sure that the quantities, that the values are matching. If they are, the water main can stay in place, but in the meantime, we want to get the entire installation permitted so that if an issue were to happen, DPW could mobilize quickly to install the pipe that's already permitted by DOH to make that connection to limit any downtime and any temporary water provisions that might be necessary, which would be very costly.
Thank you. And this is a good example of the escalation of costs, because the last time you looked at this, I think it was about a year and a half ago or two years ago, the total cost was $740,000. So that it's a good example of the escalation that we're dealing with.
Yeah, and one of the things that we've been talking about is doing this phased approach by putting in the metering infrastructure on either side now to avoid some of those costs and also pre-purchasing the liner, which has a longer lead time and also is very subject to cost variation. So that way, in the future, the costly materials are already in place and ready to go.
Joe, how much do the meters cost?
The meters are around $25,000 apiece, but they have to be housed in pre-cast vaults, basically six-foot diameter manholes, and they have to have sampling stations and things like that. And then they'd have to be tapped back into the main on both sides.
So the $430,000 this year reflects the cost of installing the meters as well as purchasing that pipe or the pipe liner.
The liner is around $200,000. You have the meters. You have mobilization. We were also going to, you have to do two wet taps on either side of the lake. So that's four wet taps. You have two six-foot diameter manholes being installed. You're working near the lake. You have some pavement restoration. So mobilization, all those things tend to add up. Again, we were trying to be conservative on this, so we're hopeful and expecting that the bids would come in lower, but we certainly want to make sure that the village is allocating enough money to cover these projects.
Next water project is the East Village Water Main. The first section starts on the west side of Route 17. It was under Route 17. Oh, I'm sorry. Jed, did you have a question?
Yeah, Michelle, before we go on.
Yeah.
I guess, Joe, what I'm struggling with is there's modern technology.
You're breaking up a little bit, Jed.
There, can you guys hear me?
You're coming in and out, but I think I can hear you.
Hold on. So there's modern technologies that can detect leaks that are past a fraction of that? Why wouldn't we use that technology first to determine if there is a leak in the water main before installing very expensive meters on both sides of the lake? I'm obviously not an expert at all in this, but it just seems.
Yeah, a lot of the leak detection is acoustical leak detection, which gets muffled when the pipe is within the water. So it's not underground. It's actually surrounded by water on the exterior, so it's sitting on the bottom of the lake. But the reason for this approach. But the reason for this approach is that if you do leak detection, you find that there's a leak, it would, you'd have to do an immediate repair. It'd have to be notified DOH and you have to do an immediate repair. So and then that would lead to the installation of this water main. So the idea is that you get a jump start on it, get this project permitted, monitor it, and then are prepared to to install it. And through a planned bidding approach, you're going to save a lot of money as compared to an emergency implementation.
In fact, I get the emergency one. That makes a lot of sense. Maybe offline, Joe, I'd like to understand more about if there's a leak, the emergency, what the protocol is, because you know, we're losing water. We know, we know we have leaks. So it's it's counterintuitive that if all of a sudden you found out, you'd have to do an emergency repair. So I'm not sure. And maybe I'm thinking about it wrong, but it doesn't totally track to me.
Sure. No, I'd be happy to to speak to you offline in in more detail.
So the East Village Water Main starts on the section that we're going to start with first, starts on the west side of Route seventeen, goes under the highway, goes under the railroad. And then that one section will end at Powerhouse Lane. So that would be the first phase. Then I think if I go down, yes, okay. So that'll be the first phase, a million sixty thousand. Then we're, we can hold off phase two and three to the third and fourth years. So you want to talk about? Do you like to talk about the that section and its all its complexities and then what would need to happen to go under the Ramapo River and and the balance of the project?
Right. Thank you. So the East Village Water Main is something that we've been looking at since two thousand eleven. The water main starts around where Chase Bank is, and it goes through a drainage culvert underneath Route seventeen, underneath the railroad, and comes out around SOS Fuels property. The DOT and the railroad are not permitting reinstallation, excuse me, of that water main through that culvert. That main has has experienced a large number of breaks within the culvert over the last few years. And the DPW has to go in there in very tight quarters. Usually it happens during during the winter, during cold periods. So they have to deal with confined space. They have to deal with a lot of hazards within that zone. So the approach would be to horizontal directional drill underneath seventeen underneath the railroad. A lot of the costs are generated for the railroad crossing. The railroad's got very specific requirements for sleeve piping, twenty-four-seven inspection and monitoring while the operations are happening. And the inspectors are provided, of course, by the railroad, so they are going to backcharge for that, and those costs are included there. And then this would connect into Powerhouse Lane. The second phase would go from, and Powerhouse Lane is basically where the the railroad parking lot is. There's that roadway that goes north and south. The second component would be crossing the Ramapo from that location and going just to the west side of the throughway. And then the third component would be crossing the throughway and then connecting up to Grove Drive up on East Village. This water main is is critical, very similar to Tuxedo Lake, where there's only two mains that serve the East Village. There's this one, and there's a second one that's a four-inch line that's to the south that crosses the same the same alignment, but just down to the south. So the loss of this main would be would be very significant for East Village, as they've got no other connections there. So this is a project that was that was bid a while ago, at least to cross the rip, to cross the the railroad, and that component was very expensive. So we're looking to get other contractors. It was bid in a very difficult bidding climate at the time. So we want to try to pick our spot here, notify contractors in advance, but we want to try to break this into phases where the most critical component is the seventeen, the Route seventeen and the railroad crossing, and then followed up by by subsequent phases in future years. The approach to this would be to, what we've been discussing is the the option of bidding this project with bid alternates. So the base bid would be the first phase that we just discussed, and then we would include the options as bid alternates for the village to select whether to pursue the second and third phases as part of the project, and we would program that in as part of the bid where they would do it over the course of of a few years. And if the bids come in favorable, then then they would move forward. Otherwise, the the project could be rebid, the other phases could be rebid and looking for a better bidding climate. So we're trying to build in some flexibility in terms of how to implement this project in the most cost-effective manner.
Tinka, you have a question? Yes, Joe, since we installed whatever it was, I forget the terminology, but some sort of pressure pressure valve in the village? Have we had issues with the line since then?
The pressure valve actually was serving a different component, a different portion of the town. However, I think since that's been installed, and then we also installed some pressure monitors that go back to John Ledwitt's desk, so he can actually monitor what's happening. I haven't heard of any reported instances where the pressure valve gets stuck open, which which would then increase the pressure within the system and cause breaks. So that's been working effectively. However, that's a, that that was impacting a different portion of the of the system within the town.
Okay. And so is there anything like that that we could do for the rest of the the town?
That was really caused by a pressure issue. These breaks are are caused by the pipe material and the age and the condition that they're in. So it's different, yeah, reasoning.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I got a, I got a couple of questions. The source of this water here is the lake?
Correct.
Okay. So the lake supplies the water to the village. This is a project totally for the town. It is our responsibility to provide all of this to the town. Well, what percent of the cost of this is being borne by the town?
Well, they're part of the system. The whole, the hamlet is part of the system. We have, the system includes most of the village. We have a total of six hundred and eighty residential accounts and seventy commercial accounts. So I know some people have wells in the village, so maybe it's three hundred and fifty residences in the town and seventy commercial.
That's not my question, Mike.
I know, so.
This has to do with the responsibility that the village taxpayers handle. My recollection is there is a historic basis when everything was created that the village agreed to provide water to the township. Okay? However, this is, this is a third of the budget you're talking about here. And therefore, there's a question about whether this is a is a necessary expense on our part.
Well, I think you'll see it's a, it works out when we get to the financing, and it's not going to be funded by property taxes at all.
No, it's be funded by debt.
It'll be, but the debt will not be paid by property taxes.
Debt will be paid for by taxes.
No, not not property taxes. It won't. I'll show you.
That may be an academic issue. A third of the expense here is for something that has nothing to do with the village. I just want to make sure that I understand that correctly. Is that a yes?
So your question is, i- it is the responsibility because we we do.
My question is straightforward. Are we paying for the water?
Everyone. All the the water accounts in the district pay water, pay capital improvement fees, and they pay water, the water rates on the amount of usage that they have, correct? So that is the only source of funds to repay this debt. It is not coming from anything that is related to the federal fund or the property taxes. It's only the water fund account. The water fund is funded by all six hundred and eighty-two accounts and seventy commercial.
We can deal with that later. Thank you for clarifying it.
Okay. The second project in the hamlet is the Mountain Road Water Main. We're going to start, we're projecting that we'll start that project in year two. And would you like to talk about that project, the undersized pipes and where it was located? It's in this section.
Yeah, this is, this is along Schoolhouse Road, Mountain Road, and it includes Circle Drive, Schoolhouse Lane, Spartan Place, and also serves Hillside Avenue. The original genesis for this project was at the end of Mountain Road, where there were a significant number of breaks that were occurring. So we were replacing that pipe. It was upon further review, it was discovered that the connection going into the neighborhood was problematic. There's also water mains that go underneath residential structures that connect into Route seventeen. So the approach is to make the diameter of the pipe appropriate to current standards coming into that neighborhood and replace the Mountain Road section and the the incoming section off of seventeen that feeds the neighborhood and eliminate the feed that goes underneath the residential garage. Because in the event of a break, that obviously would be problematic. And then a bid alternate would be to replace the the inner loop around Circle Drive in Schoolhouse Road as well, bringing that up to, bringing that up to standards, because it's a mix of of galvanized steel and cast iron four-inch diameter pipe, which is undersized for for today's current standards. Again, it was going to be a base bid, a bid alternate approach where if the bids were favorable, you could proceed. Otherwise, it could be rebid or it could be put on the shelf for for future phases.
Hey, again, that'll be paid only from water fund revenue, not property taxes. Jed, any questions on that?
No, I mean, I have a question on the financing. Is the financing backed by the water and sewer, or is it backed by, okay, so it's not backed by the general?
Not by property taxes, no. Only, you know, we have general fund that is funded by property taxes and, you know, things such as county sales tax revenue, things along that line. So that's the general fund. And then the water fund is just the capital improvement fees and the the what you pay for your usage of water. Same with sewer.
So the bonds won't be backed by the village Tuxedo Park. They'll actually be backed by the sewer and water, water revenue? Is that right?
That's correct. That's correct.
Now, may I, may I jump in?
Please, Noah.
Yeah.
Noah is our bond advisor.
So everything that the village does, anything that any village does in the state of New York is is what's known as a general obligation bond. Not a, versus a revenue bond. The revenue bond is what the MTA issues or the toll bridge, you know, I think, you know, you know, for bridges, the Bridging Tunnel Authority, if that still exists, or whatever they call it now. But where it's backed by the the tolls that we pay when we go over the bridge. But everything that the village issues is what's known as a general obligation bond. So ultimately, everything is backed by property taxes. However, what Michelle is saying is is correct in that to to pay for these bonds, to pay for the debt service on these bonds, you said, you know, water fees, rates, and and the and the capital improvement charges. That's that's what pays for these bonds. But again, it's.
That's what I was getting at. So it is, even though the the, we're planning on paying for, to Paul's point, it does become a general obligation.
Right. Yeah, right. Yeah, the village doesn't, the village doesn't issue revenue bonds. It issues general obligation bonds. But the source of payment for these particular bonds or for the water purposes will be rates and, and, you know, capital improvement charge. So again, technical matter.
I think it'll be more clear when we get to those charts. Jed, I'm going to go through the projects now, and then the next part we'll be looking at how we're going to finance it. And we've got charts that show that debt service.
Excuse me, Mayor, I think Tinka Shaw has her hand raised.
Yeah, let me just say that we will reserve a period of comment, question, and answers at the end of the discussion and the presentation. The trustees obviously are entitled to interact with the experts as well as Michelle in putting their questions. That would be, of course, Paul and Jedediah. But any other questions by any members of the public? Please, please reserve those questions for the end, and then you'll certainly be permitted to ask whatever questions you believe are appropriate, that are germane to this issue, and make public comment that's germane to the discussion this evening. So thank you very much, Elizabeth.
The next two projects that are in yellow are, will be paid from the general fund, but the general fund has an ample reserve, well, not reserve, but unallocated fund balance. And there's no property tax increase to pay for these bond, for the debt service for these bonds. So the first one is the Summit Road retaining wall. And we'll break that into two phases. And then the other one that will be bonded is Pond Three, the dam work as well as the bridge replacement. So, Joe, back to you.
Sure. Yeah, I'll keep these brief. They're fairly straightforward. There's a, is a a stone wall along Summit Road. Years ago, a a tree fell and hit it and damaged it, and it's in need of repair. It provides it provides reinforcement stabilization for Summit Road at its at its deepest point. It's about a fifteen-foot embankment that it's impounding. So we've got plans that'll move forward to forbid this year. The reason it's split between two is it's it's anticipated to be done in one in one shot, so one phase this summer, but the end of the fiscal year is middle of the year. So the the costs will be split between the two years. The second one is the Pond Three Bridge. So the Pond Three Bridge impounds the 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 central pond of, it's also known as the Upper Weewah Lake. There's a small dam there with a bridge, which many of you have probably driven over or seen. It was discovered after the earthquake earlier this fall that there was some leaking coming through the the bridge abutments, which actually, you know, forms part of the impoundment of the dam through the stone masonry. So as part of that, we'll be injection grouting those those stones to prevent future freestyle and future heaving of of the dam. But the the bridge decking's been something that's been been on the village's list for a while that needs to be replaced. I believe there's a limit on on the the size of vehicles that can cross it. So we'd be replacing the bridge deck, putting on DOT-rated guide rails and things like that, and bringing it up to to current DOT and and safety requirements for this area.
Thank you. Any questions, Paul? This one is a general fund source. But as you'll see, with the debt service projections we have, we do not need to raise taxes to pay the debt service. Jed, any questions?
No, I mean, Michelle, we talked about this earlier. The the retaining wall number seems high to me, but I'm not an expert in this. It just seems like a very big number to rebuild the retaining wall. Joe, can you kind of explain how we got to such a big number?
Yeah, it's retaining the road, and it's a fairly steep area. So we've got to do excavation. The road will have to be closed down, and the and the soil behind it will have to be removed because we have to get it tied back into the hillside. So there's more excavation than than would appear, but we're we're going with a cost-efficient modular block wall that'll that'll be stamped concrete, that'll replicate the existing stone masonry on the backside, which is also hidden by the woods. And then we would be having a concrete stem on the top and then reusing the stones that were salvaged from the wall to tighten on both sides to match the the appearance on the on the top side. But there's a bit more excavation and geotechnical work that needs to happen to to get it into the condition that it needs to be.
And then for the Pond Three Bridge replacement, how much of this is the injecting the concrete versus actually just replacing the bridge top?
The majority of his bracing is is replacing the bridge top. About fifty thousand dollars is for the injection routing, and then the rest is for the removing the, you know, demolishing the existing bridge top, putting in new concrete decking, putting in guide rail that's consistent with what you see on the entrance to the village, placing asphalt. You've got neoprene gasket pads. There's a bunch of different components that go into it.
Thank you. Thank you.
The, uh, next three projects, uh, that are in white are also, uh, going to be paid from the general fund revenues, but uh, they will not be bonded, um, because we feel that we have an ample amount of unallocated funds to do that. Uh, so what we looked at is out of the approximate one million or so, we will bond half of the projects and then we'll use unallocated funds for the other half. Um, so I will ask the mayor to talk about our village office project.
Certainly. Thank you. Um, earlier, uh, earlier in, uh, twenty twenty-four, um, we looked at this building, which was once, uh, stables. I, I suppose that everyone is pretty well familiar with it. And then we looked at our office space, uh, and how we utilize it. And, uh, it's been clear to me that, um, in, in being here just about every day during the week and meeting with people that there, we're lacking certain facilities. Um, we're lacking a conference room to meet. Um, I meet people in this room, the meeting room. It's rather awkward when there's a large group of people. And it's really appropriate for the village to have a conference room. If anyone's been in John Ledwith's space, you'll see that it is piled high with files and records. And there's barely room for him to work at his desk and he needs more space. So his space has to be expanded out. And in the corner of the building, there is what's described as a mayor's office. But it's actually a very, it's a very small space that the mayor shares with the court clerk. And it would be nice if the mayor and the court clerk were to share a larger space, uh, where we could work either at separate desks or perhaps at the same desk. The bottom line is we, we have additional space in this building to expand Village Hall. And that would be behind me or north of this particular wing that I'm sitting in. And in order to accomplish that and to enlarge Village Office so that everyone is not squished together, we have, uh, used the services of an architect uh, and had several meetings to work out a design configuration that would allow Village Hall to be increased in size to make it more workable. And while at this time, we don't have an estimate as to what it would cost to, uh, to enlarge Village Hall. I'm hoping that within the year twenty twenty-five, we will get such an estimate. We'll make it a public issue at it, at a board of trustees meeting and we'll discuss the appropriateness. But, but from my perspective, um, there is not enough space here for the employees who work here to function. And it would be nice if we had additional office space and a conference room so that we could hold meetings in something other than church pews. So with that being said, uh, we will get back to the public uh, on what the proposed cost would be and we'll have an open discussion at a future board of trustees meeting on funding that, uh, expansion. If the board agrees that it's an appropriate thing to do.
Now we're using for the, uh, bond projections, a placeholder of three hundred thousand. Uh, we also do need, uh, filing, uh, space. Because the filing room that, uh, Elizabeth needs to use right now is, uh, not up to proper standards.
And we have files in, uh, essentially on, on air conditioned and unheated spaces at the far end of the building. And while they're not subject to direct, uh, deterioration through water falling on them, obviously if they're, uh, subject to, uh, outside atmosphere, uh, that deteriorates those files over time.
The, uh, other project is the proper alignment of, of the dam sluice and, uh, that is at the end of the Weewah Lake. And, uh, and Joe, if you could talk about that for a sec?
Yeah, I'll try to keep this one brief as well, but, um, the, the Weewah Dam project was completed a few years ago. Um, I believe it was designed and constructed by, by others and, um, there's a valve at the bottom of this lake. It's the low level outlet sluice valve that basically can drain the lake in anticipation of a flood event or if the dam were to breach. Um, so basically it's an emergency outlet that's required by DEC dam standards. Um, the valve is located at the bottom of the spillway. If, if you can envision the dam and how it's a, um, it's got a semicircle arched, um, stone way. Then there's that, um, straight section that, that goes from north to south into the lake. The valve is underneath that north to south section and it's not accessible. Um, while the, while the water is flowing by, by man to get down there to actually operate the valve. So it was designed to have the stem come up and then, uh, the operator basically comes up and they've got a couple of union joints to, to get it to the sidewall and then come up to grade. So that way the DPW can operate it. But those universal joints have failed and they weren't, um, meant for that type of environment. So, um, John, John Ledwith, um, the other year in, in, you know, um, did a great job of getting those replaced with, uh, proper material, but the vendor said that they're, they're only anticipated to last for a short period of time. So there needs to be some modifications to, to put in a proper stem that goes straight up and down directly to the valve. The problem is where the valve is located is right in the middle of that opening. So a, um, a walkway would have to be installed across the dam that could support the, the, um, the, the hand wheel operator as it comes up to grade. So that way, uh, DPW can get out there safely and open and operate that valve. Um, so again, another conservative number here. Um, we're hoping that we can come in less than that. Um, but it's something that's necessary as part of, um, as part of the de- design of the dam and the operation of the dam, especially during an emergency situation. Um, because the dam is a high hazard dam and it's got the ability, uh, modeling shows that it has the ability if that dam were to breach to actually flood the railroad. So, um, it becomes problematic and it needs to be able to be managed properly.
Which is why you're saying it will be required by the DEC.
It will be. Yeah. The next, the next, um, inspection, if they come out and they see that there's, there's issues or if it's not operable, because what happened was these joints just corroded and they seized. So they just weren't able to be operated. So we want to get out in front of that. Um, not only from the regulatory's perspective, but in the event that, you know, something were to happen, um, there's, there's a human, uh, safety, uh, element to it.
Hey, thank you. Um, the last project is the rebuilding of the stream overpass and the guardrail near the, uh, waterfall on West Lake Road. So we don't, we don't have, uh, any bids for that. Yeah, we haven't had any bids, right? So what would you say about that? Is a hundred and ten seem like a good number to you?
Yeah, we haven't investigated this one, um, fully. This was added on to the list by DPW. Um, but I, I think it's going to be similar to, um, what was done at what we call the Warwick Brook Bridge, but it's that, um, culvert crossing that's near the wastewater plant on the west side of the village. If you, that's the area where you see we've got the, we've got that timber guide rail that, that's similar to what, what you see on the entrance road in there. Um, where a box, a con- precast concrete box culvert was installed. Um, I believe this is something that, uh, DPW could, could self perform if they have the manpower. Uh, they have the technical ability to do that. And then, um, whether it's our firm or another firm would provide technical guidance in terms of making sure they procure the right, the right size and, and proper, um, box culvert. And, uh, most of that are material costs for the replacement there.
Okay, thank you.
Let me, let me just note that, that the evaluation of that particular location, the, the overpass and the, and, and the roadway, uh, has already been conducted by, by another firm, uh, and, uh, cost estimates are similar to what you have here. Uh, there was some issue with respect to the DPW's ability to actually do the work itself. So we will determine whether we need an outside contractor to actually physically replace the, the sluice and, 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 and then the roadway itself.
Okay, good.
But that is being actively worked on.
So now we have the total for each project, uh, here with the total sewer project, six hundred and thirty thousand. Total water projects, four million, two seventy-six. And the general fund is, uh, both the bonded ones and the ones that won't be bonded, just over a million. So the bonding projects will be five point four million. And we will now talk about, and we're going to do that. Let's see. Okay. The, uh, dark blue are the current outstanding bonds. The orange, uh, is the debt service. This is debt service, not amount of bonds. Just actual debt service that will be required for those bonds, assuming a four percent, uh, interest rate on our bonds, twenty year term. So the blue is what we have right now and that's what we're paying. The orange is the additional debt service, uh, required for those two projects, the summit, uh, road retaining wall and the Pond Three Dam and Bridge. And so you see there's just a, a little increase next year. Uh, that's why we are confident we can absorb that in, um, in the general fund without raising any property taxes. And then as you could see, the debt service goes down. Does that make sense?
You look. I understand you would make more money for it. We have two issues. The issue is what additional spend do we need? And the second thing is if we need it, how do we finance it? And you're suggesting we finance it through a?
A twenty year bond.
A twenty year bond. So I think we all have to examine as trustees, the amount we need to raise. And I think the twenty year bond may be a perfectly legitimate and easy way to do it. Just how big and.
Yeah. So this would be the impact on the general fund and a, a slight increase, uh, in the next, well, actually not. Uh, let this year be next year. Slight increase.
Why don't we keep going and then we'll get through it.
All right. And, you know, go down to the sewer fund next, because that's a good one. So, uh, the blue, again, the dark blue is our debt service on existing bonds. Though they, there's one bond that matures after the next year. Uh, there's a smaller bond that will still be outstanding. So the new sewer bond, uh, is an arch, the debt service on the new sewer bond. Which is the six hundred and thirty thousand.
Project number three, the first one. Yeah.
So, um, again, calculating how much we'll have to raise, um, uh, it looks like, based on these numbers and sort of an average account, uh, it looks like a ten to fifteen dollars per account each quarter will be, uh, the increase to service the additional debt. Any questions? Jed?
That would be on the capital, uh, that would be the capital improvement fund for sewer charges?
The capital improvement fee, uh, mostly. I mean, perhaps slightly, uh, an increase in the sewer rate, but, um, overall, it would be ten to fifteen dollars per quarter, per account. The water fund, uh, obviously is the, has the largest, um, projects. So, uh, right now we're at the blue, which is a hundred and thirty-three thousand in debt service. This is principal and interest on the outstanding debts. Um, next year, we will increase that by the amount in orange. And then, uh, it'll top out in fiscal year twenty twenty-nine through twenty thirty-two and then come down to another level. So we are, uh, Noah and I were looking at it and it looks as though the average account would probably see a hundred and fifty to two hundred dollars a year in additional costs.
So how, how do, or maybe Noah can talk to that, but how do we get to that? Cause if there's, if it's four hundred and fifty thousand and two thirty?
Yeah. So, um, the increase, uh, is basically, uh, say three hundred thousand. And our water budget is a million-ish, right, right around a million. So, um, that's just, overall, the accounts, the commercial and residential, uh, say an average residential account might be around seven hundred thousand. So if that's a, a year. So it would be about two hundred dollars a year. That's, but that's, we're going to gradually increase. Obviously we don't need that until um, twenty twenty-nine. So we'll gradually increase it to that number. Looks like you're formulating a question, Jed.
No, no, I'm just doing math in my head and, um.
Noah, comment?
No, I, I think it's, yeah, I, I think you said it well. And I, and yeah, I just want to emphasize that it, it is. It's, it's something that's going to be phased in over time as needed or as necessary. Um, depending on the, you know, the flow of, or construction cash flow, um, depending on how fast, you know, these projects kind of move forward. Um, it'll either be, you know, we, we have to, we'll have to work in about three hundred thousand dollars in debts, in additional debt service into the budget. When it's all said, by the time it's all said and done. And so that's what that kind of represents. We're just kind of going with what we think is practical or what Joe thinks is practical or, um, in terms of the, the, you know, completion of the projects. So that's why you see this kind of phased in approach. And, and it also, you know, kind of works out well that it, it is not just, you know, an immediate impact. So, um, but no, I, I, you know, um, well done, Michelle.
And also we do have, uh, still, uh, very comfortable, uh, supply of unallocated funds in the water fund. It's, it's a very, uh, healthy, uh, situation, financial situation. So we can use some funds. It, it'll be a question on a year to year basis as the projects get rolled out. Um, how much will subsidize the increases and how much will actually be increased? But we don't anticipate a, uh, for the average account to, for it to go up more than two hundred dollars a year.
Got it.
Okay. That's the presentation. So I don't know if you want to open it up to anybody else on the, uh, well, anybody else on the board or on our capital projects?
Yeah, well, we will, um, we'll first allow any board members to make any comments on the presentation over and above the questions they asked. Uh, trustee Brooke, anything you'd like to say on?
No, I, you know, thank you for getting all the work done. Clarifies the issues with some specificity. I think there are issues that will be raised by the board at our next board meeting, potentially an executive session as we think it through.
Okay, thank you. Um, Jed?
I, I echo Paul's, um, comments and, uh, kudos to you and team for, and thank you for doing all the work on this.
Thank you. Um, capital projects committee, Joanne or Tom, any comments?
No, I think Michelle is, uh, it's been a collective effort and, and Tom and Michelle have really, working with our bond council, um, have done a great job to, to quantify it and to, uh, and collectively we've tried to analyze which of the squeaky wheel projects that need to go first.
Right. Yes, we worked, uh, it, just to repeat what Joanne said, the, uh, we've been working, um, a lot at weekly for most of the year, um, on trying to prioritize these projects and really present projects that we are necessary. Um, you want to?
Okay, all right. I, I just, sure. Yeah, there's a couple of questions. I, I just want to again reiterate the, uh, the thanks of, of, of the village to the, to the extraordinary work that, that this committee has done. And the amount of time and effort you put into it and the result that's been presented today. And I know you'll continue to, to perform admirably as we move forward. The board of trustees will take all this in, uh, we'll discuss it starting at the next meeting on. We'll discuss it starting at the next meeting on Wednesday. We'll consider alternatives because there's always alternatives. And then Michelle and Paul and Jedediah and Josh and I will publicly discuss the matter and we'll come up with a workable solution. Well, it seems like a lot of money and it really is. I mean, you're talking over $5 million in projected expenses. Michelle and the Capital Planning Committee have determined the way to do this, to fund this, without having me to, without me having to stand up and say, sorry, folks, your taxes are going to go up. And that in and of itself is an accomplishment. And I congratulate all of you on that. Because if we charge a fee for a service, like any utility, whether it's cable or it's electricity or it's water, it's a service you provide to people. And if you have to improve the system, you have to pass along the costs of improving that system to the customers. And we have customers in the village and we have customers in the town. And I assume that everyone will understand in order to make the service better, because that's what it is, it will cost money. And in this case, it will cost millions. But we will distribute fairly and equally to each account, water and sewer, the amount of that expense. So that's what we're looking at, without having to tap into the general fund that the taxpayers of this village provide. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, now let's, folks, put your hands up and I will, one at a time, let you in. Okay, let's start with Bryna.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, it's actually Martin, hello?
Oh, okay, okay, Martin, good evening.
Okay. I'm Mr. Bryna to a lot of people. But I have two questions. One, on the retaining wall, which has been in eyesore for years and years on Summit Road. Could you elaborate on the general principle of stone walls adjoining private property? And has there been a general determination about that? What is repaired, what isn't repaired, whose responsibility? That's the first question. The second question is, Michelle was talking about the prioritization of projects. We have spoken in the past, the prior meetings about at least two roads, one being Onyo Road, which has the safety issue of these boulders which are missing. And I would have hoped that that would be included as an important item. You know, anything of safety and that's really a safety concern. So I think that should take precedence over some of the other stuff. Anyway, those are my two questions.
Sure. With respect to the first question, you're actually asking a question which would better be answered by the village attorney who's not present at this meeting. The responsibility of the municipality is compared to the responsibility of private landowners with regard to walls that abut village roads. So I'm going to ask, I'm going to ask you to hold off on that question and we will get you an answer through the village attorney's office. We might even be able to do that by Wednesday if you check in. Because that's a question of law that none of us, as we're sitting here now, are prepared to answer. So with respect to the second question, we've discussed that before. We've discussed safe, road safety. At this particular point in time, we have on the agenda for Wednesday, a public hearing on the issue of reducing the speed limit. The issue of safety of specific roads, whether it be Laurel Road or Onyo Road, and the drop-offs at those locations is certainly one for continued discussion. And while it's not something we're going to be addressing in this capital improvement plan, it's not something that's off the table either, Martin. And I want you to know that it's on our, it's on our plate. And we appreciate the fact that you've brought it up again because certainly road safety is very, very important. We've, the first step would be reduction in speed limit. The second step would be looking at various roads that do have precipices and drop-offs to ensure that, God forbid, anything should happen if someone's driving or walking on those roads. So that is something we will look at over the next year or so.
Thank you.
Okay. Tinka, let me. You're good, Tinka, at least I think you are, hold on. If you unmute yourself, you can, there you go.
I did, I think you accidentally muted me. Anyhow, I have several questions. Will the presentation, the spreadsheet and all the charts be available upon request if somebody asks Elizabeth for it?
Well, the spreadsheet is available in the back of the room. So absolutely, it will be available. And in fact, I may just email it to everybody in my mayor's message that's going to come out this month. With respect to the charts that the deputy mayor has presented, I'd leave that answer to her.
Well, I mean, they are so tentative and I think that they need explanation, especially the water accounts. So how about if on Wednesday, we try, we present it again? And then I try to, instead of just putting the charts out, we write up a narrative that would explain that, how about that? Okay. All right. And my second question is for the 5.4 million that is being proposed, the total for the bonds, is that including the to-be-determined projects? Uh, no, it's only the color-coded ones. Okay, so that does not include the village expansion? Correct. Okay. And then?
Includes, includes the dam.
Yes, it includes only the color-coded.
Expansion.
Yep, the green, blue and yellow highlighted items. Right, but not the to-be-determined, okay. Correct. And then, how much is in the water capital improvement fund currently? Well, the, it's split into the capital improvement fund and just the general operating fund. And if you combine those two, it's about a million dollars. Okay, so, okay. So that's why I was saying before that we can subsidize increases in the rates in the water fund, you know, as we reach up to that high number. Okay. And then I, from what I was, what I understood, maybe I didn't understand correctly, but it seems that you're, for the water fund, you're proposing between 150 to 100 increase in the capital improvement fund per year. Not just the capital improvement fund. Well, it'll be a balance between the capital improvement fee and water rates. Okay, fee and water rates, okay. So the capital improvement fee, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but the capital improvement fee is the same for everybody? And obviously, the water rates depend on how, you know, how much you pay for water. Depends on your usage. Well, yeah, well, the rates, but I mean, if you're going to increase the rates, then it's anyway. Anyhow, but then from what, maybe I got this wrong, that only, the sewer would only go up 10 to 15 per account, per year? Because of the, because there's a small increase in the next fiscal year and then the existing bonds are maturing? I'm sorry, thank you, per quarter, thank you. So that's 10 to 15 per? Per quarter, per account. Or account, okay. Now, okay. I, let's see, let me see, you want me to get that chart back up? Uh, no, no, I just am trying to understand that. Because my understanding is, and Joe's uncle, please correct me, is that it's more expensive to deal with the sewer lines than it is the water lines? Expensive in repairs? Yeah. And replacement.
Not necess, not necessarily. It depends on a number of different factors. The approach that we're using for sewer is typically cheaper because it's. Because we're relining it, yeah, we're doing trenchless. The water mains that we're looking at here, you've got to do complete excavation, which includes, you know, repavement and all that kind of stuff that goes into it.
Okay, and that is because the sewer lines are in general larger pipes? So you can reline them as opposed to the water pipes, you have to replace them?
Well, it's because that's, that's one of the factors. So the water lines are undersized. So if you have a four-inch line, you certainly don't want to, you can't cement line or you could, but it'd be very difficult to cement line and clean and cement line a four-inch line. But that still wouldn't bring you up to standards for fire flows and things like that. So you want to bring them up to eight-inch diameters. For sewer lines, you can reline it. Also, the liners that are being used for sewer pipe don't have to meet drinking water standards, which are higher standards. So the liners that are being used in sewer pipes can't be used in total water. You'd have to use a different system.
Okay, okay, those are my questions. All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, we have Mr. Brown, I believe he raised his hand. Hold on for a sec.
Actually, I took it back down to ask my questions, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, all right, thank you, Mr. Brown. Anybody else on Zoom have any questions or any comments they'd like to make in relation to the presentation we've had tonight? With the understanding that this is a board of trustees decision will require further discussion in public. So you're always, you're welcome to come on Wednesday. And on Wednesday, you can raise any issue you want. That's a regular board meeting on Wednesday. And as always, any public comment on any issue that any member of the public deems relevant can be made at that time. So last chance, anybody else have anything they'd like to ask or any comments they'd like to make on this particular subject we've been discussing for the last hour and a half?
And Noah, any other comments? I'm sorry, you're muted. Sorry, hill on you.
All right, no, no, I'm, no, I'm good. Yeah, well, well done, Michelle. You put a lot of work into it, I know, I got the calls, nights, weekends, all that kind of stuff.
You were very patient with me. And Tom? Joe, any last comments?
No.
No.
No comments, I think Paul heard plenty from me tonight.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so let me just finish this up. Hearing no more questions, everybody's had their say. I make a motion that we adjourn this special meeting at 8:26. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by the deputy mayor, all in favor?
Aye.
The meeting stands adjourned. Thank you all for coming. We look forward to seeing you all on Wednesday.